To this special city council meeting. Just to remind you, there are no cell phones or electronic equipment allowed except as authorized by state law five five one point oh two three. If everyone will take just a moment. Let's stand for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of each state of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and just as for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, and I call this meeting to an order. We have a quorum this evening with only council member Stokes absent due to family reasons. City secretary proof of notice.
Thank you, Mayor. The notice of this meeting was posted by four P M. On Thursday, November ninth.
Great, thank you. Any public comments this evening?
No, we have none.
Okay, great. No presentations, recognitions, or proclamations. I have a quick city mayor report just to update everybody. Thank you, first of all, council for coming to this special meeting. I appreciate it. It was a special called meeting in regards to the A I S D childcare donation. Thank you. And also, I want to thank council for all your attendance and your comments. If you're absent, a lot of you zoom in. Thank you for doing that. Councilmember Stokes, as I said, is away. Her granddaughter is getting initiated into the National Honor Society, which is a big deal. She did provide a statement for me to read on her behalf, which I'll read during the discussion. Alpine's on the cusp of great things. I'm hearing it in all the meetings I'm going to. There's a lot of things coming down the line, and it's really exciting. Twenty twenty four is going to be a great year. The meetings from Alpine Community Projects with working on long-term assisted living care or nursing home is going to be phenomenal. Meetings with J D Newsome from the hospital district, Big Ben Regional Medical Center. I'm telling you, twenty twenty four is going to be big. And then, of course, Soul Ross and A I S D. Also, I wanted to make you aware, our next workshop will be at our next meeting on December fifth at four thirty, and it's in regards to water. Water, of course, is important to us, as we know why and where we live. And there is a water in the desert conference coming up. If you are able to attend even a portion of it, I encourage you to do so because they're going to have experts on water and aquifers and talking about us specifically, which I think is going to be important for us to know what the experts think in regards to water and then landowners, community members, policymakers. So I'll be in one of the sessions. Anyway, everybody with an interest in water in the desert and what's going on in our own area. And since I'm doing a little, a little portion of that, I have a Zoom meeting on Friday with Dr. Warnock going over what we're going to discuss at that conference. They're going to come to our water workshop, too. The experts in water are on December fifth to help participate in that workshop. And then also probably the wastewater one, too, as a favor for that. All right, so those sessions, by the way, they pretty much run all day. So I know you can't attend all day. Everybody's busy, but if you can come to any of them, please do when they put out the agenda. So that's Thursday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty four. It'll be at Soul Ross State University. And for me, so let's move on. No attorney report, manager report, city staff updates, no public hearings, no consent agenda, no information or discussion items. So let's move on to the action items. City manager, if you would, please read that.
Approve interlocal agreement between Alpine Independence School District, A I S D, and the City of Alpine for financial support of a childcare facility.
Okay, I need a motion. So I need a second. Okay, so we're going to move on to discussion, and let's start with city manager.
And so this has been an ongoing topic, not only with our residents, with council, with other community leaders in regards to being able to provide adequate and the word affordable childcare services to the residents in our community. Alpine I S D took the lead on this back in the summer, working with the Workforce Commission to get several grants and donations to be able to initiate the process, get their admin building outfitted to be able to even have a child daycare facility. And of course, the toys and furniture and the things that are needed, as well as some of the staffing. And if you do remember, the university used to have a childcare facility, and of course, they closed the doors on that. The community center was provided childcare service. Those doors. And so right before the pandemic and some during. As a result, there's been the outcry. We've heard it in our town hall meetings. We've heard it, you know, just amongst having conversations with residents. And so the Alpine Independent School District has been working with numerous entities, numerous organizations to try to find funding to make this sustainable and affordable. And I did ask Michelle some questions that I thought each of you may have, you know, for this discussion in regards to their budget, which was included in the packet. Well, notice that it is going to be hard to sustain this. They currently have twelve or fifteen with three more possibly enrolling. And they can hold up to about comfortably fifty. There is room for more, but then they would have to look at the requirements for staffing. And the number of employees, there's currently six, fully staffed, and there would be twelve. And the current rate is forty dollars a day. And that has been discussed amongst many people as far as is that really affordable? Especially for not only our residents, but even for our employees. And they have worked with different organizations that have provided matching availabilities, specifically the Workforce Commission and a couple other entities that if they could get the donations, they would apply. Like for us, it's applying through the Workforce Commission, providing them, and then they would match it dollar for dollar. So our donation would be ideally tripled, and then they could take that money and they could apply it to another matching, and then it would basically be quadrupled. So our twenty-five could ultimately end up being a hundred thousand. Currently, there are several entities within our community who have greatly reached out and helped. Big Ben Regional Medical Center, Brewster County, and Soul Ross. And then, of course, they're requesting donations from the City of Alpine to assist with this.
Can you tell us how much each donated?
Big Ben Regional Medical Center has donated a hundred thousand. Brewster County has donated fifty thousand, and Soul Ross State University has donated fifty, fifteen thousand to be matched by another group, an area, the Permian Basin Foundation.
And so they would also match ours, too, right?
And we would be applying through the Texas Workforce Grant, which is a copy of it is also in your packets that we would fill out in submit.
What is the total amount that A I S D is wanting to get?
And I believe they're looking at trying to get about two hundred and fifty plus thousand and then being able to match that to make it five hundred thousand.
And where are we on what is already?
Exact numbers I don't have, but I do believe one of the representatives from the school district may have it.
You have it?
I do. You aren't going to be here tonight, so and she's she sent reinforcements.
Yeah.
And part of the initial discussion when this started was to look at the city sponsoring spots and that we could utilize for our employees. We would pay for so many spots, and then our employees. Upon surveying our employees, unfortunately, we only had two who had interest and one who no longer does. So that route right now wouldn't be as feasible for us or beneficial to our employees. And I do suggest that the city look at this being a one-time donation until the city comes up with proper procedures on how you'd like to move forward with providing not only other entities, but organizations' future funding. So that, one, we can get our Alpine I S D off the ground and get them running for another year, but, two, we can also have a better understanding of the long-term impact.
Okay, all right. Would you like to come up?
Sure.
To speak? Okay, just say your name and if you're with A I S D.
My name is Chris Fonsfola. I'm the Alpine I S D CFO and fiscal agent for the Alpine Child Development Center. And so I started in July, and this is one of my first projects I worked on, and also on attendance as our director from the childcare center, Michelle Seckretic. So, um, yes, so you got everything right. You kind of hit the nail on the head. One of the things I want to highlight is that childcare is one of the things that this town is is kind of treats as a as a luxury rather than a necessity, and it's absolutely a necessity. Um, we've seen it. We've seen it come through our doors. The daycare is really great. If you haven't seen it, I encourage you to come by and see it. You can come by anytime, and we'll walk you through it. We've been working really hard to make it happen, and so one of the ways we did that is grant funding. And so we secured two grant funds that actually helped us to build it and sustain it for this first year. So we got off the ground. We got all the toys we needed. We got the supplies, diapers, the structure in the back. We got all kinds of things going on. But that is just kind of to keep us going and to get us started. Afterwards, we're going to need some funding to keep going and to continue to provide this service in the future. And so one of the things that we're hoping to do, and you hit the nail on the head, you said affordable. And so one of our goals is to actually, with this grant funding, to be able to drop our cost down from forty to twenty or even below that. Um, so as you guys can see, I provided you guys a development center budget summary, and that kind of shows, you can see those red numbers right there at the bottom. Uh, that kind of shows where we need to be in order to make. And of course, this entire spreadsheet is sans any of this funding. So it just means that we don't get any extra donations or anything like that. That's what we're looking at. And so this two hundred and fifty thousand matched to make five hundred thousand would really greatly allow us to do a lot more with this and make make this work for our citizens. So the goal of ours is to be able to drop the cost down. So we started with forty, kind of just to make sure we had what we needed to get us going, but the goal is to bring it down. And so, uh, that being said, Dr. Renner has been really working hard to make sure this is something that can sustain itself and continue on, and this is a goal for us to have this in the future. Um, I know I grew up and I went to the community center, and so I was one of the things I was near and dear to my heart. And so being able to provide this daycare is really cool now to see it kind of something like that coming back to us. Because with Sora's closing, all those other things, it's been a necessity for the young parents of the world. And so we've seen some of our, some of our students that have that are there now, they're principally able to go back to work. And our principal, you know, brought his new little, little baby as well. So it's really important to our people as well. Um, currently, the daycare is licensed, and so they have been licensed for about four months now, is that right? And they're working towards a Rising Star certification on our license. Current amenities include five different rooms with appropriate furniture for each age group, ranging from six months up to three years, uh, three years old. Then they're eligible to go into the the school system and start with their early childhood development program that they have as well, which that's not a requirement, just certainly something we encourage. Um, other things that they do have is a beautiful new fenced-in structure, secured playground, carpeted turf, all the things you could have right behind the admin building, which you've seen come up, and that was all done locally as well, too. Um, they have a newly renovated state-of-the-art security system, allowing our staff to monitor wireless access points to monitor and operate the door from their normal locations. Because you did highlight correctly, uh, we now have seven staff members. And so seven staff members over all the different rooms is kind of a lot to manage that door and stuff. So what they do is they have the ability to remotely take care of that and let people in and kind of like allows us to maximize our staffing that we have. And then we also have an online childcare system that allows us to check in with parents, communicate, basically do all the billing online and kind of have everything in a one-stop shop where we can actually invoice and bill and take care of all that kind of stuff online, which is really nice. Parents can actually check in and see how their kid's doing, message our director, message to the teacher. And that's just a few of the things we've been able to secure through the workforce grants just to get us going off the ground. Um, so going back to the budget, you guys can see that and look at that one, and I'll be, I can answer any questions you have along the way, too. Um, currently, we have about fifteen kids in our facility, or we could have three more enrolling in a few weeks. We anticipate a couple more children starting after Thanksgiving. Uh, we're currently at seven employees, and so after running the math, uh, when we get to the max capacity, we're looking at about twelve to fifteen employees total, including our directors. And so that's kind of where our goal is, when we have about fifty to seventy-eight students. Our license allows for us to have seventy-eight students. Uh, we're setting a comfortable cap at about fifty for our size, just to kind of keep us comfortable until we have a few years under our belt. Um, but I would love to see that number maxed out. I think it'd be a really blessing to have that. Uh, currently, our rate is forty dollars a day, including meals from the A I S D cafeteria staff. So we actually do get the meals catered from the lunch cafeteria that they bring over every day, breakfast and lunch. And that's included in the forty dollars a day. Something we are willing to do is we are willing to reserve spaces for stakeholders who have donated, so that includes your city employees, which means that we would have a set of site space for you guys, and no matter how big we got or how many people came in, you would have a set number of of spaces. We're doing that for Sora's and the people that have donated as well. And so the impact that your donation can have is huge. With two hundred and fifty thousand is the goal to get from everybody, so matching to be five hundred. So if we're trying to garner this two hundred and fifty thousand together so we can have that full five hundred, currently, we have a hundred thousand from Big Ben Regional Medical Center, fifty thousand from Brewster County, and fifteen thousand from S R S U, which leaves us short about that thirty-five thousand. So, or seven, sorry, seventy, right? And so basically, that thirty-five is what we're asking from the city as as the highest number that we are looking for, uh, because what will happen is the Permian Basin Area Foundation will then match that thirty-five thousand for us, and then the workforce will then match that seventy. So your thirty-five thousand dollar donation could become a hundred and forty thousand towards the future of this daycare. And you're absolutely right. This is a one-time donation we're looking for. And so the idea is that we would revisit revisits every year if we're looking at continued partnership. And so it would kind of come as a list of, you know, on on the bills, it would say the rate is still forty dollars where we're offering it this year, like a, like a reimbursement kind of to bring that rate down. That way, should we have not be able to do this again next year, we're not, our clients aren't being blindsided by the double rate, but it wouldn't be doubled. It'd be bought back up if we're able to reduce our rate.
And so if you reduce your rate, it'd be to fifteen dollars per day?
Uh, we're looking at twenty. If we can do fifteen, that would be great. Uh, but twenty is definitely feasible with this, depending on how much we were able to secure.
And you are year-round?
Yes, ma'am. Year-round.
How many directors?
Two. We have a director and an assistant.
Okay.
And we also have classroom leads and then assistant. Are they called assistants? Yeah. So. And within the classrooms, they're in their own age groups. So you have infants, you have one-year-olds, two-year-olds, and so we have leads in each one of the classrooms that also then can do that. So we don't have all the rooms currently open, so we don't have age groups in every room. So the only one we're lacking is the ones and twos. Is that correct? So. Um, so yeah, basically, essentially, we're looking at, we're hoping to get thirty-five from you guys, but anything you guys are willing to give, we would be more than graciously accepting of that, and we really appreciate your support thus far. I know you guys have been really vocal for us, and I see the the nice things you guys say about that district and the and the daycare in the papers. So I really do appreciate your continued support, and we we are happy to be able to provide the service to people of our friends, so.
All right, stay there for just a minute.
Yeah.
Okay, councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, Mr. Vincent. On your expenditures, you list building lease and fiscal agency, agency. Is the building, doesn't that belong to A I S D? And isn't the fiscal agent, will that not be a member of the?
Yes, ma'am.
So why are you charging that off of the?
So the reason we did that was because, um, if you didn't know, we actually have what's called the five eighty co-op in our building as well, and it's something that we've done to them, and we actually charge them a lease for them to operate out of our building as well. It's just kind of a similar thing we do, just to kind of offset costs of the electricity and things like that. Because with the building being the administration building, we don't really necessarily charge the daycare for utilities, things like that. That's kind of to help offset some of those costs to the district. And the fiscal agent fee is just to help us to provide stipends to the business office that spends a lot of time managing this grant. Uh, because as you guys know, uh, you guys have gotten a got a lot of grants. With grants comes a lot of reporting and a lot of responsibility to make sure that kind of stuff happens. And so you'll see twelve thousand there as a one thousand dollar a month, uh, building lease, and then the fiscal agency is broken up over the years as well.
So it's basically electricity and water?
Correct.
And grant manager.
Which is my my office, which is currently three people.
You mentioned at the beginning of of your talk that you all had enough money for the first year.
To get us going, yes. So but we're also funding a lot of that ourselves. So payroll, um, what's what's great about this first grant is it really just gave us the supplies and the construction materials to get going. And so we've been putting the bill for payroll and all the things that kind of go to actually make it run. So this is going to be able to get us to where that kind of offsets and everything is able to fund itself from there from there now. So we are, we are footing a lot of the bill currently for things like payroll and insurance and all things that that exist, because the current grants don't allow for us to have payroll expenditures.
Okay, one more question on your investment partner donation amount here. It states that the partner donation may also be used by the Texas Workforce Commission to draw down additional federal funds.
Yes.
So does that mean for anybody, or is this money assured to be for the A I S D health, uh, daycare?
So my understanding, and I can have Dr. Renner clarify this, and I'll reach out to you for sure, but, uh, my understanding is that is this is going directly to our, um, daycare, but what that entails is some works, uh, workforce subsidies. So the workforce also does offer some programs to where they can actually offer subsidies to people that can't afford daycare. And now there's a long waitlist for that. I don't think we have anybody currently getting subsidies, right? But I think that might be what that charge is referring to.
That just kind of worried me, that it doesn't, it states it can be used, so it basically. Or else, anywhere that they see fit.
Right, and I think that might be them pulling grant funds to bring to us either way. But I, and my understanding is that all that would come directly to us. Everything that that is in this two hundred and fifty that they match would come directly to us. But I can have Dr. Renner follow up with you if you'd like.
Well, it's just, I would kind of like to know that beforehand, and you you, you can't.
Right.
Okay.
But that's my understanding completely.
The M O U, um, it's a very simple M O U that I put together. And Dr. Reiner hasn't finished reviewing it, but it was, it's specifically specified that the funds have to go to the child.
That's what I thought, and I didn't, I didn't want to say that without being a hundred percent sure, because I hadn't, I hadn't seen the revised M O U yet.
And I know that's where A I S D will send it. It's just the way that this was worded. It kind of got me to thinking that, okay, it it makes it sound like Texas Workforce Commission.
Anyone could use it.
Well, the Texas Workforce Commission can use it anywhere.
Okay, councilmember Dan.
We've had a couple of questions, too.
Sure.
Um, so it looks like y'all are at a hundred and eighty thousand right now and trying to hit two fifty. Yes, sir. So that means we're seventy thousand short on that, and so you're looking for twenty-five.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Forty-five.
I'm going to interrupt because you signed a conflict of interest.
Oh, so I, so I can't even discuss.
Oh, but we allowed councilmember Rodriguez to discuss, didn't we? We didn't. Okay, that's fine. Okay. Okay, that's fine. All right, councilmembers from Dante.
In what are the ages infant through?
Six months up to three years.
Three years.
Yes, that's correct, three years. Six weeks up to three years. I'm sorry.
Oh, six weeks.
Six weeks. Yes, we have some very tiny babies in there. So six weeks. And that's actually the bulk of our our current enrollment is young children, like babies. We just got a, what, seven-week-old? They're born in August, yeah. So we have some very, very young children in there, so.
Very cool.
And you can hear them if you come in the office and try.
Councilmember Stevens?
And talk a little bit about what I'm going to call the market demand curve.
Sure.
Uh, because I'm out and about town, I've heard people say, not going to use it, can't afford it. Understand you're trying to bring price down. And and so it's this balance between demand, which is the number of potential versus the price point at which they're willing to say show up. Share a little bit about that if you can, because, you know, nine hundred bucks, people were saying, not going to touch a ten-foot ball.
Yes, sir. I've actually been told that beforehand myself. I hear all the time that forty dollars is a lot, and respectfully, I I agree. It is, it is quite a bit. Kind of being what, um, Dr. Renner has discovered to be kind of what what people are kind of charging here around in the area already. So we're right around about thirty-five to forty is what the standard is in this town that people are already paying, and that's what we established just to get us going with the goal to bring it down eventually. Uh, because we knew that it was going to be quite entertaining to start a daycare right over. City is currently offering things and hope to bring it down after that.
So do you have any numbers at the forty-dollar a day, what the demand is versus a twenty-dollar a day, what that demand would?
I don't quite have demand, uh, but I did attach that the document that shows you kind of where we're at. And the thing that we we polled a lot of people, and I know Dr. Renner did do a big poll before this all started, do you remember that? Uh, I don't have those numbers with me, to be honest with you. Um, but I know she was looking at interest, and that's what kind of piqued us going after this in the first place, is that there was interest in wanting to be a camp. About thirty-five people. So we had about thirty-five people interested in our services at the forty-dollar range.
At the forty-dollar range in your, how many do you say, Renner?
About fifteen.
About fifteen, and that my sense is people will express interest whether they sign up or not. That's another story.
Correct.
Getting things going is certainly where you're trying to go right now. Sustainability for the long-term plan is where the challenge is going to be. As you all know, that's why daycares come up and they go down. Uh, and we started having led human resources, the bowling company, a hundred and seventy-five thousand employees, we had a number of daycares. People was no longer sustainable. Uh, and because of the old market. What's, so you you get up and running this year, what happens next year? Because you're certainly not going to get the grant funding you're getting this year. And and that's why I asked the demand curve. If you get it down to twenty dollars, uh, a day, which sounds like you're going to get there or close to it. I'm concerned about next year when the grants aren't there. What's your thinking in that area?
So the grants that we have in place right now, we're solely grants used to build up the structure and get everything we needed to get off the ground. And so the grants that we're applying for, and this matching grant that we're getting, is what we're going to use to handle operating costs. So once we have, you know, finished all of these grants to build everything, the goal is then to use the funds from revenue and everything to then be able to fund the running costs. Because the the key is getting started and then running at the same time are two very expensive things that happen at once. And so once this one's done, it should be a lot easier for us to continue with the process going. Uh, those those overhead costs won't be there anymore. The cost of getting the administration building in order, of hiring people on, getting the the security cameras and getting the licenses and all those things that go with getting it started won't be there anymore, but also this grant won't be there either. And so we're simply seeking out, um, funds to continue to be able to operate.
So next year.
Correct.
One should not expect you all to come back and say, oh, by the way, you did last year. Thank you very much. Can you do it again?
Actually, yeah, so that is something we're looking at. We're visiting this on a one-year basis, and so, you know, of course, we won't expect you guys to do anything next year, but the potential would be to come back and ask again for this kind of thing to continue. It's not a automatically renewable grant, but it's something we can't apply for every year. And so that is, that is kind of a of a goal, why we kind of talk about this as a partnership rather than a donation. You've heard Dr. Renner use the words partnership often, and that's kind of why, um, that's coming forward. But it's definitely not a requirement or an obligation by by any means.
No, I understand from our contractual step. I'm just trying to understand the thinking that goes with.
Yes, sir.
Back to my demand price point.
Right.
Knowing the community reasonably well, it's interesting. There are certainly daycare capabilities that people want to provide. You're one of them. Soul Ross used to, others have. There are many get taken care of by grandparents.
Right.
You know, which is part of, from a cultural perspective, what goes on in West Texas. And so I'm just, that's why I go back. I think one of the things you really want to look, look at is uh, this demand curve and understanding where your price points and breaks are, uh, for a longer-term sustainability. So that's the concern.
And that kind of allows us to evaluate it, too. By doing it on a year-to-year basis, we can go in and see.
Get you there.
Uh, yeah, and if it doesn't work, then of course, you know, we revisit and see what can change. That's, that's, that's one of the things that I like about doing it this way, is we have a little more security.
Yeah.
Uh, you're not, you know, into a two-year, three-year contract only to find that, oh, the kids aren't coming, you know, that kind of thing. This allows us to kind of evaluate it all along the way.
Yeah.
Much like you do with your city taxes and everything else.
Thank you. You answered my questions.
Yes, sir. On the one sixty-five that you already have pledged, do you not, if that triples you, are you not close to your five hundred thousand anyway?
We are, we're pretty close. We're just short that that, uh, seventy. So, uh, but should, so that's, you have different scenarios that you see here. Um, we've done a lot of studies and kind of country numbers on it, and you'll see that we've done fifteen, twenty, fifty. Well, and so, you know, we are prepared to not be able to go all the way down to twenty if we don't, aren't able to secure the funds that you said, but we plan on reducing ways that we can. So maybe the first year, if we don't get the full five hundred, we just go down to thirty, or we go down to twenty-five instead. Uh, we ran some models that kind of show that there is ways around it, but reaching that goal of twenty or even fifteen is is ultimately what the five hundred is going to give us.
Y'all take the child cut childcare vouchers.
I don't know that we do take childcare vouchers. I know the only one that I'm for sure that we offer is the subsidies that come from the workforce. And so I I childcare vouchers from.
From anything, like even even that one, too.
We have those. Um, like, those are something that we get, but those are a kind of pretty difficult to get. Uh, I'm sure that if a company, you know, if, say, bigger telephone is offering to pay for some of the people, that would be kind of like a voucher. Is that what you mean? We would definitely.
But Texas workforce, the ones that they give out. Y'all, y'all don't take those?
The workforce has the subsidies. I think we're on the same page. I think those are ones that you're talking about.
Operator before they could even start taking or consider subsidies. So they're about a.
So you're, so you're not there yet.
There was?
I'm sorry?
They're about a year out before they can actually start running that whole program.
And then it has, they have to go through a whole process to be approved, and they have to apply. It's kind of a long process to get a subsidy.
But will y'all be going for that?
We will take that, yeah. I mean.
I mean, you'll be, you'll be trying to work to get yourself certified.
Yes, ma'am. So they're currently licensed, but they have to be a Rising Star certifier to get the subsidies, my understanding. And so that's.
For the population that we have, I think there's quite a bit of people that use those funds.
Correct. I wouldn't, couldn't tell you how many people actually have to, because you have to have to apply for it. So there are, there's not really any data for us that's really available on that. Uh, because they can't apply for it yet because it's not quite available, but pending availability, we will take those.
You expect to be Rising Star certified again?
The timeline for that is about six months. Is that right?
We have our license for a full year before we can even apply the Texas.
And the license was made available to you all in September, correct? August. So fully licensed as of August. And so as of next August, they'll be eligible for the Rising Star, which at that point, you'll be eligible for the subsidies, right?
I think it's a wonderful idea, but I'm just kind of a councilor Stevens. Kind of worried about what's going to happen the following year. I don't know if the city is ready to be or has the funds to be able to fund, you know, every year.
Right.
As you know, the city has quite a few big projects on our own that we're trying to take care of. That's just what worries me. Uh, and it kind of makes me wonder whether it was just jumped into without really taking a look at what was going to be happening a year down the road.
That's valid. Um, you're, you're, you're making points that I hear you completely, um, and that's part of the reason why this is only a year thing, to allow us a little bit of leeway and to, you know, kind of take that leap and then figure out if it's something worth going back to next year.
So you're thinking your enrollment may increase if you're able to drop the rate?
I anticipate that, yes, ma'am. I had a lot of, um, people tell me in the community that, you know, it's just too expensive. I can't afford it. I would love to go there, um, but I just can't afford it.
Do you all stay open year-round, or do you follow the same, uh, holiday schedule as the schools?
They do not follow the same holidays as the school. They do stay open year-round, and they actually are open.
And they actually are open much later, um, than the school. So like schools shut down at three forty five, uh, they work well until five thirty six P M to allow for that. They open up at seven, seven thirty as well too. So.
Councilmember Stevens?
So Megan, can you remind us where the money would come from?
Megan's imaginary fun.
No, you had something in the packet. Tell us what you had.
So the city.
Imaginary fun.
She is very transparent and been very open to the council. I have just not requested anything to be done with it. Um, the city does have a self insured health insurance fund that we were required to have when we were self insured. In twenty twenty, the city moved off of the self insurance, um, but the funds have all been stayed there. One outstanding claim that could possibly come in. Um, two, we switched to an F fully funded with an H R A. So the H R A, um, is actually paid for out of that account. Um, currently that account has a little over four hundred thousand dollars in it. Um, this isn't a, I now know we have money, we should use it for everything fund. Um, it is really been set aside for the future funding of our health insurance and that for the employees. This would be a one time approval by council to move twenty five thousand. That's what I recommended, um, into the general to cover this donation. The fund really was intended for health insurance. Um, even though we are fully funded, we still cover an H R A program.
You want to explain what that is? H R A, what does that stand for?
Health reimbursement, um, accounts. And so the city actually puts five hundred dollars for every employee at the beginning of the year into their, they give a little credit card. Um, and so as they use it, the money comes out of that account. We don't pay for it all up in advance. Um, it's just pulled out as the employees use it. So year to year it could vary. We may use the full amount. We may not use the full amount. Um, it really is dependent on employees utilizing it. Um, we do have to pay a premium. So we pay a monthly, um, basically account management fee to the task. Well, I just know it's task. I know it means something, um, that they manage the account. So they go through the claims, the receipts, you know, they have an online portal and that. The discussions has always been about employee benefits and looking at, you know, changing those and adding and making it bigger and better for our employees. This would be that one. So your tonight, you'd be, if you approved it, the money would be transferred out to cover this specific.
With that being said though, and our budget being what it is and the major projects that we have, this is not something that right now looks like we could continue to fund.
I personally would not recommend continuing to fund it under the health insurance fund. You've all talked about a nonprofit strategy and how you guys want to donate something like that. You would really need to go down that route. You don't want to go back to bad fiscal traditions from the past, just because there's money in the account, doesn't mean you shouldn't.
Exactly. That is, that's what I was trying to say. I just, I just want to know that, want people to know that it's not an abundance of free money that we have.
No.
And with, and with everything that the city is needing to do, it's not something that looks like we could.
At this point, no. Like I said, this would be a one time exception. The, the thought process originally, I said, was to sponsor spots. Um, but the idea of helping them get off the ground and continuing with the childcare is something that we can use to entice not only our current employees, but also down the road, future employees. Um, it really is hitting this on, on childcare services here. And so I, I like the idea of helping them. But council would really need to, to look at sustainability for the city side to move forward with this type of donation or any other type of donation at that.
To anybody.
Our twenty five thousand would end up being a hundred thousand. Is there a possibility of lowering it?
That is council's decision.
And then your request of thirty five thousand, so it'd be.
At the highest.
Fifty.
Because a thirty five would make us whole and a two fifty to five hundred.
Okay. And I promise.
Original request was zero to forty, just so you know.
And I promised Councilmember Stokes, I would read her, because she can't be on Zoom since she's at this. So she said, I can't be there tonight as I'm attending my granddaughter's induction to the National Honor Society of Midland. However, I wanted to voice my approval for the funding for Alpine I S D daycare. Such a badly needed service to the community is finally here and I feel our added funding will help it continue to grow and flourish in Alpine. So if I was there, I would gladly make the motion to approve the interlocal agreement between the Alpine I S D, Alpine Independent School District and the city of Alpine for financial support of a childcare facility. And I would vote yes when asked, Councilmember for Ward One, Judy Stokes.
The amount is really dependent on you guys. I, I averaged out what everyone was.
And we are grateful for whatever you guys choose to do and if you're even listening to us today. So I just want to thank you for your time.
What do we have in that fund?
A little over four hundred, but it is used for the H R A.
And each employee gets five hundred dollars on their, their card.
At the beginning of the year, and then it's prorated for new hires.
And whatever's not used remains in that fund.
They'll pull out with you. So it does fluctuate year to year.
Are we getting some kind of interest on that fund? Is it in some kind of?
Yes.
Okay.
But that money that stays there and is carried over is used to sustain that, that project. Probably in years. So it.
That what we have provided to employees has fluctuated. It was seven fifty, it's been five hundred. It can go up and it can go down.
That's a tremendous benefit. I haven't been anywhere where there's something like that. The most we had is it would come out of our own paycheck, our own money. Taxes which helped lower your, possibly your tax bracket. And then it went onto a card, but it was money from you, not money from the employer.
And so I, I, I do want to tell you, there's a lot of added value to the program. Um, when we went.
To which program?
To the H R A.
Okay.
When we went fully funded, it changed our premiums, it changed our copays, it changed our deductibles. So this was an assistance to kind of make up for that difference from where we were at as partially self-funded to fully funded.
And it's a program that the majority of our employees do.
Right? Yes, they do.
That's why I have a problem with paying, I mean, playing with that fund. I mean, as everybody knows, we're not able to pay our employees what they're worth. We're having issues in trying to entice employees to come to Alpine. So these benefits that we're able to provide like that is what is going to get us the employees we need.
That's why I said the recommendation is just for.
This year.
Time, the amount we'd love to console, um, but, but that is a fund that I, I don't, I don't want every other agenda. Well, let's move it out from there. Um, because it is the sustainability. And then our insurance, if we get hit with a high claim, our, our premiums will go up. And so right now we've averaged between five and eight percent increase over the past three years. Um, our brokers do an awesome job keeping it below ten percent.
That's very good, actually.
But we do have to take into consideration, we do have, you know, an older population in our employee base and we have young wild ones as well.
Right.
And so we don't know.
We also have to consider that the childcare would benefit the employees too. Having a childcare like that is a tremendous benefit. It's what I had Kalen in and it was more than just a childcare. It was like a pre, pre school. She learned a lot of things being two and three years old that carried on when she went into pre K and then on to school. And the other thing is, is our taxpayers, it would benefit our taxpayers because I do hear people. There's a family that lives in my neighborhood, the husband's D P S, they cannot afford it. They cannot afford the childcare center because it is forty dollars a day. And they do have two children, so it's cost prohibitive. So I hear the same things out around and the residents do want to have a childcare. I would like to see the numbers increase. We notice as it goes from fifteen to fifty, the deficit is less. So the more children that can be enticed to come, the more sustainable the daycare would be. So I think it is something that would benefit our residents, our taxpayers, and we need to seriously consider. But I do agree with you that it should be this year. And then council needs to decide on some kind of donation policy for nonprofits, because we can't donate to everybody. We do, as Councilmember Rodriguez said, even though these funds wouldn't come from something that would affect our waste water treatment plant or our streets. We do have these large projects that we need to take care of for our city that our residents also want. And that obviously would benefit our residents too. So from my opinion, one time this year, I say twenty five to thirty five, somewhere to bring it to where it needs to be, so we can lower the rate and see if we can increase enrollment and we'll have that year to see that.
So the proposal on the thing is twenty five thousand, I'd like to call for the question, unless someone wants to modify.
Okay. So I have call for the question. Do I have a second on that?
I'd like to lower the amount to twenty thousand.
Okay. So you're moving to amend the original motion to lower the slate.
Do I have a second on that? Okay, there is no second. So that amendment fails. Let's move back to the original motion. We have a motion on the table for twenty five thousand. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Let's vote. Councilmember, City Secretary, Councilmember Nance is abstaining due to conflict of interest. Let's call for the vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, uh, secretary, we have on all council members who are present, Councilmember Rodriguez and Dante and Stevens, who have voted to approve the motion to donate twenty five thousand to the childcare center for this year.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Thank you for calling this meeting. Thank you all for all your support. And if you ever want to come by and see this, this center.
I definitely want to. So what do I do? Just come in and see Marcia?
Yes, come and see Marcia. She'll set us up with the time and I'll come.
Do I call her first instead of time?
Whatever you like. Either way works.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, that sounds great.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Please, otherwise we do.
You have a fantastic holiday.
Me too. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. And we adjourn at six thirteen.